Welcome to the Cupertino Planning Commission of Tuesday, October 28, 2025. I hope you will join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Madam City Clerk, may we have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Feng. Commissioner Linscock.
Here.
Commissioner Scharf.
Here.
Vice Chair Kusolsharon. President Chair Rao.
Here.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda will be the approval of the October 14, 2025 Planning Commission minutes. May I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you, Commissioner Linscock. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Vice Chair Kusolsharon. We have a motion and a second. May we vote?
The motion carries unanimously with Commissioner Feng absent.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. We have no postponements. The next item on the agenda is oral communications. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the commission on any matter within the jurisdiction of the commission and not on the agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes. In most cases, state law will prohibit the commission from making any decision with respect to a matter not on the agenda. Madam City Clerk, do we have any oral comments?
We have no speakers in person and no hands raised on Zoom chair.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Moving on then, we will close the oral comments. The next item on the agenda is the study session, Agenda Item Two. This is the study session on objective design standards that the planning, the recommended action is that the Planning Commission provide feedback and recommendations regarding the establishment of objective design standards for new multifamily and residential mixed use development. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, we do. Thank you, Chair Rao and members of the Planning Commission. Just wanted to, you know, you've met Greg Goodfellow. He'll be doing it. My light's on. And is it amplifying?
You're going to close her?
About as close as I can get. It was working.
Okay, this one's working. We'll just stand for this beginning, the preamble. Again, it's been three months. I believe July 22 was the last time we had the objective design standards before you. So the meeting tonight, we want to kind of revisit some of the ground. We had meetings in May and July, which focused mostly on what were objective design standards, what were the commissions' issues you see in developing in them for the city. As you know, we currently do not have them. They would apply to mixed use and multifamily projects only, not single family. So tonight, I felt like having three months elapsed, we need to revisit some of that, but also kind of get to the next step so we can take this project forward. One of the items when we had ended the July meeting was a discussion of other cities that have had objective design standards. I know on short notice, the agenda went out on Friday, so that probably didn't give all of you time to look at the five cities we provided links to. If I remember the July meeting as well, some members of the commission had already reviewed other cities' objective design standards, but I think this tonight gives us an opportunity to kind of go have an overview over what we had discussed, but also look at some of the elements from those cities, that if there's something in their documents, for instance, being part of the code versus a standalone document, whether you think some of that makes sense, that feedback would be good. What I would also suggest is, given that you may not have had time to review all of those, and one commissioner being absent tonight, that we could re-agendize a follow-up discussion, allowing you to provide feedback as well, say, in two weeks. That way, if there's any comments you were not able to get through the review, you could do so at that time. With that, I will turn the presentation over to Greg Goodfellow. And then again, this is a study session, so the goal tonight is really to get your input so we can move forward. So there we go.
Thank you. Thank you, Luke. Chair Rao and Commissioners, thank you for having me again. It's nice to be here. What we want to do tonight is actually, as Luke said, revisit, you know, the history of the project with the Planning Commission, and then talk about some of those sample objective standards packages from local cities and get your feedback, A, on those packages, and B, on the next steps. So again, the team for this project, I'm working closely with Luke and with Pew, the Planning Manager at the City of Cupertino, as well as Placeworks Principal Charlie Knox, and of course, two or three project designers in our office. All right, as Luke mentioned, sorry, our first meeting here was on May 13 of this year, and I introduced the ODS project, and I also introduced some of the community design preferences that we heard at our meeting here a couple of weeks earlier with the community, where we held a workshop and had design preference boards and solicited feedback on local preferences for residential design. We discussed the document and documented the Planning Commission's residential design priorities, and those ranged from privacy issues to wanting to maintain a green jungle and the importance of landscaping, to making sure that that trash and garbage receptacles were well-hidden in the back of parking lots, a diversity of priorities. And we took the following direction from the PC. The commission wanted to see a sample of objective design standards that we could create for the city based on some of those primary prior, design priorities that we heard from you. On July 2 of 2025, we brought back that package of potential objective design standards. And again, those were developed in response to five of the design priorities we heard from you. And we got some great feedback on the format of that document, down to the details of the graphics and things like that, which we, of course, documented and will bring back into any further objective design standards. But very understandably, we also heard from you, what are other cities doing? It would be great to see the format, the outreach processes, the types of standards that are going into already adopted local objective design standards. And so tonight, what we're going to do, and I know you, as Luke mentioned, you haven't had that much time to look at the memo we put together, but we will go together, we'll go through five of those packages. And I've selected the city of Sunnyvale because I think it exemplifies sort of that standalone package of objective design standards as opposed to one that's embedded into its zoning code. This was adopted in June of 2023. It applies to multifamily residential, mixed-use residential, as well as supportive and transitional housing. I bring this up because, as is the case with some of these other objective design standards that were adopted two or three years back, that means they were initiated right after this influx of new laws, SB 330 and things like that were going in, where cities were very committed to ensuring that the standards reflected all of the potentially streamlined projects. So although it's not the case that all ODS projects target supportive or transitional housing, this one does. And again, that was the city's response to those recently enacted laws. This was supported by an outreach process that took two years. One of them, the first was a virtual public meeting. Again, this was during COVID, where everything was virtual. And I know this because Placeworks actually put together these ODS. We first had just a very open educational virtual meeting for the community, as well as staff, about what ODS are. Again, at this point, they were less known. And then we had a virtual public meeting to solicit design insights. That's similar to the meeting we had here, but this one was in person, of course. And then we had a stakeholder focus group with developers and architects. And then finally, a joint Planning Commission and City Council study session that was separate from the adoption process. It has a number of approaches and formats, text-only standards, very traditional, tabular quantities, selective lists. In other words, you know, designer, we need to choose two or three or more out of a list of 10 or 12 potential approaches, point-based scoring, and then some of the more traditional 2D diagrams, 3D diagrams and photographs. And you're just seeing some of the examples from the document on this page. San Mateo, this also was adopted in the late 2023, so I think it also reflects that initiation date right after this package of laws was really coming into play. It is also a standalone document, and it applies to multifamily development, mixed use residential development, and additions to multifamily and residential mixed use development. This was clearly a decision of staff and leadership there. Most ODS do not have that additions component. It also supported by a two-year outreach summary with an educational workshop and a design input workshop, similar to what happened in Sunnyvale as well as here, and then two Planning Commission study sessions and a developer roundtable, and then that joint PC and CC study session. Again, text-only standards here. This document had an interesting approach of these texts associated with labeled and illustrated photographs, and you can see these here, where they overlaid certain areas of an image with the standard, the focus of the standard, 2D diagrams, three-dimensional diagrams, and also lists to choose from for various standards. Palo Alto, this is a different type of document. This was adopted in 2022, but it's published as part of the Palo Alto Municipal Code, Section 1824. It's dropped right into that zoning code document, and it applies to multifamily housing with three or more units, also supportive and transitional housing, and residential mixed use with at least two-thirds of the residential square footage. And it had a very limited outreach process with just the city's ARB review sessions. I believe there were four of those. And you can see, I mean, it really is inserted right into the traditional PAMC format of Chapter 18.24. Something that's interesting about the Palo Alto standards is that they are also associated with contextual design criteria, that those are sort of opening non-objective statements for each topic. And in Sunnyvale, we did these, we call them intense statements. So each section is opens with an intense statement to kind of show this is where we want to go with this. In Palo Alto, discretionary projects, if a developer chooses to undergo the discretionary process and avoid the streamlining, that person can follow the contextual design criteria. In other words, they act as traditional design guidelines might have acted six years ago before ODS were implemented, whereas, of course, any project that's been streamlined has to adhere to the objective design standards unless, of course, state density bonus allows that developer to opt out, which of course happens more and more. Text-only standards here, tabular quantities as well, and various diagrams, similar to many other Bay Area objective design standards. In Foster City, this is a more recent package, standalone as well, moving towards that straightforward application of just multifamily and new mixed use. And they had an outreach summary that lasted three years, and one interesting approach for them was what they called an urban design data walk, where members of the public walked through with staff to jot down ideas for design preferences and document areas that were of design preference or not. And that was followed by a PC study session. Again, a similar approach to the actual standards themselves, with various photographs and 3D images. You'll see many of the diagrams across ODS are very similar in terms of the standard they're associated with. Doesn't mean the standard itself is the same, but the approach to the graphic is the same. And finally, in Los Gatos, that's the recently updated its ODS. Originally, it was just a very simple text-only document, and they updated it in 2023 to a standalone document. And they held a community meeting first to cover the preliminary topics, what might we cover in this document? And then finally, and then they also had a meeting to look at the draft standards themselves before going out to adoption. And those were associated with two Planning Commission study sessions. Again, similar types of graphics and formats, some's text-only, some site plan, two-dimensional diagrams, and then, of course, some three-dimensional diagrams, again, mostly related to the massing and building design components, building setbacks, et cetera. All right, that closes my discussion of the sample standards. And what really we wanted to talk about tonight was, first of all, your thoughts on those standards, the format, the outreach approaches, and the actual approach to the standards. And also, we wanted to get direction on the next steps from Cupertino. You know, we've put two options here. First of all, there's review the administrative draft before this goes to City Council at all. In other words, we would bring back to you an actual full administrative draft of the ODS, and that would be based on the feedback we heard from the sample package, based on your design preference and priorities we heard in our first meeting. Or bring back a revised sample package based on the feedback we got from that July 22 meeting. In other words, limit that feedback to that sample package so you feel like you have a stronger idea of what will go into that admin draft. Or, of course, we're open to other suggestions for the next step.
Okay, very good. Anything further that staff would like to add?
I think this works now. Okay. The final slide is, I think that's really why we're here in terms of efficiencies, is we want to get all of the comments and have this fully vetted before the Planning Commission, but also to know what you'd like to take as that final look before this goes on to City Council. Because a lot of times, you can do all the detail and draft documents, and then if you start changing them, it becomes a much more labor-intensive process. So just to try to get an idea of what is it that the commission feels it would like to see before this moves on to the City Council? It probably won't get to the City Council now, I would say, till early 2026. They have not seen this at all. As you know, this is the third Planning Commission, and I think we had an open house in February, so. And I do agree with Greg, too, the more I look at the objective design standards in other cities, they're similar. There're going to be some blend of text and graphics. I think you have things if you prefer photos, if you prefer two- or three-dimensional drawings. But to me, as having been a planner for a while, they look very similar to traditional design guidelines, except now you have quantification going on. And, you know, I guess that's another balance for the commission as well, is as you do these, they're not required. How do you blend getting those design elements in while also weighing things like, could this lead to monotony and sort of that cookie-cutter approach to design? And I guess, lastly, as Greg alluded to, we can put a lot of work into this, but my guess is, in 95% or more of the cases, these standards are going to get waived because they only apply to projects that are going to be subject to density bonus for the most part. So I think the less onerous they are, the more likely they may get followed. But that said, in talking to developers, they're familiar with what objective design standards are, but I think their take is essentially, if they fit our project, we're happy to use them. If they don't, we're probably going to submit our project and go through a discretionary approval process. So those are the factors. Before I go on, I'll let the commission talk, but that's really what we're looking for, is to try to get you a finished product that you'd like to see.
Understood. Thank you very much. Thanks to staff and thanks to Placeworks for all of the effort that's going in here. I do think, just, we'll start with clarifying questions, and then go to public comment, and then come back for discussion. But I will say at the onset that a draft ODS is something that PC should see before it goes to council. And I'd like to see that sooner rather than later, because we might want to see that more than once, and council may want to see that more than once. So the sooner we can see something, the better. Having said that, my first clarifying question, it looks like several other cities have had two community sessions and have also had a developer roundtable of some form, and I'm curious where we stand on both of those.
We had the one session, the one open house, which was held here in February. We have not had a formal developer session, which I believe came up at the July meeting as well. I think we've informally, given we have a dozen development projects on file now, I've freely talked to developers about this. They've seen it in other cities, and that was essentially the feedback I just gave, is I think developers are well-aware on multifamily projects. They're nearly always going to be eligible for a density bonus, so long as they do five units. And it's unlikely they would be modifying their project significantly to use objective design standards. That said, the incentive is, they could have a ministerial approval, so you could bypass a discretionary project. But I don't know that odds are necessarily going to get developers to change their approach to development to get a streamlined approval. We're seeing similar things with lower-income projects allowing for by right or ministerial approval, and we're getting few, if any, of those. So I think it would be a similar situation. But to answer your question, no, we have not had a formal developer roundtable. We have had informal conversations with them about this process.
And as you looked at these other cities, were you able to find any attachments that captured the developer roundtable feedback across those cities that did conduct those?
I didn't look that deeply into other cities. I know for Sunnyvale, I mean, my takeaway with this process is those, you know, four out of those five ODS were adopted in 2023, which means they started in 2019, even 18, when this phrase "objective design standards" was new to everybody. And, you know, when we put Sunnyvale together, that's why we separated out two meetings for education, you know, what even is this, and then design preference. In this project, I felt it was more efficient to just combine those into one. You know, our design preference survey had a board about what these things are, and we were able to talk through. We had more, because it was in person, it gave our staff more of a chance to answer questions and things like that. The developer component, in addition to what Luke said, a developer's input, I think, is somewhat counter to the city's input in terms of local context and prioritizing design. A developer will typically want a simplified set of standards. That's what you learned, and they're going to be thinking about feasibility impacts, which is perfectly legitimate. But that's really, in our discussions with developers in Sunnyvale and with architects, the issue was feasibility. Oh, this is the kind of thing, we can't, we can't put a notch in the corner of every building, even if it would increase a sense of safety when you're rounding a corner for a resident or things like that. So on the one hand, it's a different type of input. On the other hand, it's not necessarily the type of input that reflects a community's design priorities, the way we, you know, similar to what we found from a design preference workshop.
Yeah, I would suggest if we had to optimize where we put our efforts and resources and limited budget that we may have here, I would probably optimize for the community session, but then look at whether we can find some attachments from these other councils that have, or commissions that have had these hearings, so that we can hopefully learn from what those developer sessions were, because that feedback will probably echo again in other cities. So just trying to, now, ideally, if you can have both, that's great, but I do think we need to, I also think the Planning Commission seems to have a very low turnout of engagement from the members of the public, and so having a community session that we can hopefully socialize through city channels will get us more turnout, since we did have a good turnout the first session that you had, and just judging by some of the other community sessions that we've had. I will pause there and open it up for clarifying questions, if Commissioners have clarifying questions. Vice Chair Kusolsharon?
Yeah, I have quite a few, but I'll start with my biggest one. So can I clarify the idea of opting out of the objective design standards? Because I went through the very manual exercise to try to see in, like, Sunnyvale, Palo Alto, of all the development projects that had been approved, did anyone actually opt out of objective design standards? And I was not able to find anyone that has, like, as a whole, opted out of the entire objective design standards, but I did find multiple projects that have opted out of specific elements within the design standards. So for example, like, a roof or landscape setbacks, things like that. But can I clarify, when you say opting out, what exactly are you meaning by that?
Well, that's state density bonus law. So if you are, if you've included, you know, 15 or 20% affordable units in your project, in addition to getting a bonus, you know, a dwelling unit bonus, you also get, are able to opt out of local zoning. And so if you have, you know, if you're including those affordable units, you can then, you are, you can opt out of the objective design standards.
But does that actually really happen? Just because I haven't been able to, I don't know if there's examples of that.
Senate Bill 330 projects certainly are using that. More and more projects, I mean, again, the market landscape is impacting all of this because, as you know, a lot of, this is a townhome project-friendly market right now. But certainly, state density bonus law is being used for all types of things. And, you know, Palo Alto, for example, they sort of shifted their approach and, you know, use these contextual design statements as well of these standards with the awareness that, you know, so many projects would be streamlined out of objective design standards. I mean, opting out of objective design standards is all a part of this state law that allows you to streamline housing projects that include affordable units. And that's what opt-out means.
Essentially means is where your project doesn't fit a particular standard, you're going to waive it, which is really what we see with zoning, whether it's, you know, building height setbacks. The majority of the projects we get forward say it's a townhome project, you probably have between 10 and 12 waivers. And then on top of that, you'll have concessions for financial feasibility, but these are no different. I would say possibly one upside in the future is if you have objective design standards and say housing laws were to give them more teeth, because right now, it's really density bonus law that allows the waivers. A lot of the other housing laws do allow cities to apply objective standards, which we lack. So if we had these, there could be instances where they would take effect more so. I just don't think that, based on what I'm hearing and seeing, it's going to make a developer alter their project to say, we could get a more streamlined approval process, so we'll adhere to these. If they can waive them, they tend to be more willing to go to Planning Commission and City Council through a discretionary approval.
Okay. No more questions from the vice chair?
And we're seeing that, right? I mean, we've seen multiple developments that ask for basically unlimited waivers, even in Cupertino, so we're seeing that happen. I had a question for Greg. So how many of these objective design standards have you done prior? And in how many of those have you spoken to developers and gotten, like, feedback from developers? And I'm assuming you've done a few, but if you could speak to that, and, you know, have you applied those learnings into developing these standards? Thanks.
Yeah. So I've worked on ODS from Sunnyvale, Hollister, Antioch, two cities in Southern California. And I am not following closely, you know, the development, you know, the results of these. What I am following more and more is the role of state law and sort of the change in attitude about objective design standards, not attitude, but awareness of their vitality. And again, when so many of these objective design standards first kicked in in 2019, there was this sense that the cities needed to have them in order to control any design in their cities, you know? And, but going back to the laws themselves, none of these state laws requires a city to adopt objective design standards. You know, they only say that if you're going to deny a project or reduce its density, it's got to be based on an objective standard. So if you don't have them, you can't do that. But more and more, as state density bonus and new housing streamlining laws have kicked in, I wish I had a better answer for you about, you know, the efficacy of ODS, but I'm really feeling like more and more, they are falling into the background. And that's sort of, when I look at Palo Alto's outreach, which was none, except for internal ARB sessions, I think they had kind of accepted at that point what has become a reality, that we need to get some on the books, but as you, as you know, as you mentioned earlier, that more and more projects are selecting out ones they don't want to deal with or waiving entirely, or... want to deal with or waiving entirely or, and I'm not trying, you know, I don't want to downplay the importance of these, but I do think it's becoming more and more difficult to assess a project's influence by ODS. You know, when you look at a final approved development project, can you really look at all the elements and say, oh, that, look, they follow that ODS, or look, they followed another? I don't have a quantifiable statement about the percentage of that, but I do think it's becoming more and more difficult.
So follow up question to that. So this applies, density bonus laws and being able to waive these standards is for five units or more, right? So this would really apply to two to four unit developments more so, right? Because they can't use density bonus law to, to wait, to get waivers? Is that correct?
If you had a four or fewer multifamily project, it would, they would not be eligible for density bonus. So that would be a good example. I don't know that the smallest project I can think in recent memory of multifamily was the one on Bianchi, was seven units. So even that qualified for a density bonus.
Right. I know we don't have a lot of two to four unit.
But you are correct. It could, it, it would apply to those projects because they're not even eligible for density bonus.
Right. So I guess my question is, if, if these ODS apply to two to four unit developments, granted, we don't have any right now, but would it help encourage those? Because those would be good missing middle developments for us to have as a city, right? Even though I know we don't have a lot right now.
That's been the take of other cities. We've created separate missing middle ODS, you know, after we've done a whole package of traditional multifamily mixed use, cities have asked, can we do an addendum for, for missing middle ODS, which are, you know, focused on duplexes up to quadplexes or cottage courts and things like that?
But why would you need to do a separate one? Doesn't this one?
Just because they hadn't been done initially. And, and, you know, the, the traditional ODS really focuses on that step back of that four plus story building, you know, and that traditional massing and all these things. And again, that goes back to the initial passing of these laws, which so focused on multifamily housing and getting as many units built as you can.
So, so is it a fair statement then to make sure that when we are writing these ODS, that we cover these two to four units especially, since they are really probably the most likely to be following these ODS standards?
Yeah. And I believe we've talked about that, the fact that you simply can't adopt blanket standards for a five over one mixed use building as you, as you would for a six unit cottage court or quadplex. So absolutely, we'll have to have, I absolutely foresee separate sections.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lindsko. Commissioner Scharf?
The development on Homestead near PG&E, was that considered a cottage court? I don't know whatever happened to it.
I'm not, I'm not familiar with that development. A cottage court is traditionally, you know, four to eight detached units.
Right. I think that was, yeah. I mean, they applied, it kind of disappeared. They were going to tear down that one house and.
Yeah, correct. That is a housing element site, but the project you're referring to didn't go forward. If that got approved, it was.
Right.
Before I was here, but it is a housing element site still.
But would the objective design standards, if they existed, apply to that? Because I don't remember how many units it got approved for, four or five. It may have, I think they wanted five and it was approved for four, but I can't recall.
Well, if it did not qualify for a density bonus, then it would have. If it's multifamily housing and it's not eligible. I mean, the problem with Cupertino, once you trip the BMR requirement, you're eligible for density bonus. So, yeah.
Now, is there anything you could offer developer to abide by objective design standards, even though they didn't have to? Like, could you offer to reduce some kind of a fee, like a park impact fee or something like that in exchange for them abiding by the standards?
Well, I think the incentive is, as intended, is you get ministerial approval. I mean, that was really the trade off is you follow this, you get by right approval, the staff determine, it becomes really a staff level decision going through a checklist.
Is that enough of an incentive that people would do it?
I think it's an open question because these haven't been, you see the years.
Yeah, they don't exist.
You know, I think Greg is right, that when it was first getting discussed, it was kind of seen as a panacea to all the housing laws. Like, this is one way, we'll change these discretionary standards that have a lot of gray areas, we'll make it very black and white, and you'll have to follow it. But then when you look at density bonus, which allows waiving of standards across the board.
Yeah, it can waive everything.
That's where it gets tricky. If that were to change, then objective design standards would certainly have more teeth. But I, I think it is still open because, you know, maybe five years from now, you have a better idea how these are working. I think as Greg has said, some cities are realizing, you can put a lot of work into this, but it's still not make, may make a big difference in terms of what your development looks like for multifamily housing.
Yeah, that's all.
Thank you, Commissioner Scharf. So I know we spent quite a bit of time talking about the fact that a developer can waive something that they don't like. But I also want to point out that we have a reasonable number of good faith developers that do try and do good by the city. You know, they look at community feedback, they look at council and commission feedback. And, and so I think the role of the ODS is to provide them guidance in what the city would like to see. And so I'd like to.
Absolutely.
I'd like to make sure that, you know, with that in mind, I, I think the question isn't the bad developer that wants to waive it right away, but the developers that more often than not that we have experienced here, that will look at that as a form of guidance on, you know, what might help move their project along, because they're all trying to reduce the time to get approved so that they can move on to the next phases. That's what we want to see. Let's move to public comment real quick so that we may hear from any members of the public that wish to speak on this. Do we have any public comment, Madam City Clerk?
We have one speaker in person and no hands raised on Zoom chair. Our first speaker is Jennifer Griffin. Welcome, Jennifer.
Okay. And while we're waiting for the first speaker in the room, if there are members of the public listening, this is the time to raise your hand if you'd like to offer more public comment.
Good evening. I hope that you all can hear me nicely. I'm covering from a cold. Yes, thank you all. Thanks to staff for the innumerable hours of slogging through objective design and to the city. I have attended the meetings on this. And I'm just going to start out real quick where I think Cupertino needs to take a pass on this. We need to take, just don't do it. I, I sent a letter to the city council earlier today, just expressing my feelings with the disappointment with the state legislators and the last seven years of horrendous housing bills they have subjected the constituents to in California and my feelings about it. And I, I am tired of it. I'm tired of being pointed to that Cupertino is a horrible city. I am not a bad person. My relatives are not bad people. And I, I am, we are starting the pushback now. I'm really tired of having everything that Cupertino had being put down, because the last number of years that I have been here, that is the, what Cupertino has now for their building standards is our work. And I don't take kindly to state legislators like Scott Wiener and several others stating that we have garbage in our city. We don't. We have upstanding, loyal people who care about their city and care about everyone in it. Right now, I'm going to start out with Los Gatos. I'm glad that you all had the examples of other cities. My brother owns a home in Los Gatos. He raised his children there. My two nephew, my nephew and niece who are now grown with their own children, and he retains the house. Los Gatos Lodge right now is where my wedding reception was 24 years ago. My husband's, Monovista's high school reunion was, was going to be at Los Gatos Lodge, and they were kicked out. They had to come to Cupertino Senior Center. They'd already paid their money. And somebody got in there with a builder's remedy and an SB 330, and they kicked clients out. That means that I can't have my 25th wedding anniversary reception there next year. And my high school reunion from Homestead would probably have been there. This is the result of the horrendous SB 330 and the builder's remedy. But in that regard, and I'll take exception with the Winchester Mystery House, all that garbage that they have built around it recently, all those apartments, you can't even see it. So let's opt out of builders.
Thank you, Jennifer. That is your time.
Thank you, Jennifer. Just a reminder to members of the public to keep comments on the agenda item. And I know the agenda item here that we are looking at is a focus on ODS. Thank you. Do we have any comments from members of the public over Zoom?
We have no comments on Zoom chair.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. With that, we will close public comment on agenda item two and bring it back to the commission for discussion. Are there any further clarifying questions at this time from commissioners?
Yes, I had to, I wanted to first clarify, ask about, in other cities, like I think Sunnyvale, the objective design standards also covered supportive and transitional housing. Is there a reason why we didn't consider just including that within this umbrella?
I think the, the title was taken from, this was a council work program, I think in 2020. So the original title has been carried down from that time. Since I think those categories would be classified more akin to multifamily housing, they could certainly be included in that. That would be a comment we could modify. Again, this has not gone to council at all. So I think any comments the commission has would be something we can convey to council.
Cool. Thank you. The other thing I wanted to clarify, I noticed many of the cities actually had specific area plan within the objective design standards. Is that something that Cupertino also intends to build into the ODS, like subsections for areas with, with specific plans?
You certainly could, I think, where you have areas that are different. I'm thinking, maybe Monovista or somewhere where you have a distinct character. That's, again, something that's kind of a preferential type of thing. A lot of the multifamily housing, when you're thinking of the townhome and larger projects, though, are more likely to occur, I think, along your major corridors. So the standards would probably tend to be more similar since you're getting residential in an area that hasn't historically even had residential. So, but again, I think if there's certain standards you think that are more applicable to a particular area of the city, certainly that we, we could look at that.
Thank you.
What I would add to that also is that where there are specific plan areas involved, I think sometimes that's a result of timing. A city might be working on a specific plan or a precise plan and want to include objective standards in that plan. A lot of new, specific plans include objective design standards for that area. I think the other reality is that housing element sites are now distributed throughout cities by necessity, simply because it's difficult to find all of those sites to accommodate those RENA numbers. And those are of course sites where multifamily housing is most likely to get built. So a geographical focus of ODS might make, makes less sense when you're thinking about your housing element sites and the possible locations of new development. And then finally, that is, that has become an issue of approach, and it has to do, I think, with really local character. A city like Santa Barbara, its entire ODS are based on mission style architecture and a separation of architectural types based on community. When I looked at the city of Cupertino's general plan and its sort of defining policy for design, it focuses on diversity, a diversity of architecture, a diversity of place types. And that's in my background report, going back to the very beginning. I know that's not something you have to memory. But so a big focus of this was following that directive, going back to the city's existing policy, which is a focus on diversity, which of course is less associated with a geographical design type. But of course, we're totally open to an area focus if the commission has ideas or, or input.
Coming back to, maybe taking this up a little bit, can you talk a little bit about what is the boundary of what is considered objective versus subjective? I know the easy answer to that is it's quantified. But are there ways that you could treat the existing city standards that Cupertino has that would be sufficient to pass the objective test without necessarily making everything quantified?
Well, the objective, objective standard is, the definition everybody instantly went back to was the one that's in AB 330 in the California government code of, you know, a quantifiable, I should have this to memory, but I don't, a quantifiable statement that simply can't be viewed differently by a different viewer, you know, no matter who is looking at the standard, whether or not something is compliant with it, it can't be viewed differently by a different reviewer. And again, that's certainly basically the definition of quantifiable. Obviously, there's no should, there's no could be, there's no complements, because what's complementary to one person may not be complementary to another, even the word similar. Your multifamily project requires a similar roof pitch to the neighboring project. Well, what exactly is similar? Is that 10 degrees within 10 degree difference or 20 degree difference? So.
Understood. I would, I would sort of try to assess where you can arrive at something that is objective enough while maintaining some level of discretion. I'll give you an example. And I've looked at what the government code says, and the government code requires that the law be uniformly verifiable.
Yep.
And free of personal or subjective judgment. And, and so if you had to have language that defined a setback without having a specific setback distance, but language such as at least, which allows you to have a minimum, but you know, you could have more than that. So are there ways that you could look at maintaining more compatibility with the existing standards of the city while using language that doesn't limit you?
There are. And, I mean, the, the phrase at least is, is within objective design standards commonly. But the other thing to think about is the objective design standards shouldn't repeat or in any way conflict with an existing zoning code, because again, they're meant to complement that zoning code. So I think what's important also is to ensure that everything in your objective design standards is in addition to what's already there. In other words, setbacks are in the city zoning code. And so we won't include setbacks in the objective design standards, because A, that just would sow confusion about what do we have to look at to, you know, to, to, to find out where all these standards are. And B, it increases the risk that there might be a discrepancy between the two. So in other words, I do think there are ways to shape objective design standards that have some flexibility or invite some sort of unique approach. But I think we have to be really careful about using existing standards right now to create those, because we have to really keep these separate from existing standards, from the existing development code. And, you know, one story is when we first did these, going back, all the way back to 2017 for the city of Pacifica, all we did was take their design guidelines and changed every should into shall. And those were their objective design standards. I'm not, I can't, I'm not sure they're still going by them. But that's an, an example of sort of the original take on objective design standards. Well, can't we just remove any of that subjective sort of qualifiable language, which is what they did. And this, you know, that speaks to the evolution of these things, having, you know, started from that very basic level, going up to these, these projects we looked at now, starting in 2020, et cetera, to where we are now, which is this sort of reassessment of, let's look at ODS as a defensive safety net that every city should have in place and, you know, for projects that, that don't opt out versus a sort of an offensive policy.
Yes. So let me reiterate again, I'm not looking to take a specific example and sort of go down the rabbit hole of, you know, that example isn't the zoning code, and therefore we would not repeat it. However, I would want to look at what design standards the city has, and how do we adhere to the character of those standards as best as we can, giving the language enough leeway for the planners to be able to apply that in an objective manner. So, so use of language such as at least, and any other comparable language that allows for a minimum, but not necessarily treating that as an absolute.
Okay.
Just want to emphasize.
And we did, we went through this exercise at the beginning of the project, where we went through all of the city's design standards, whether they're went through all of the city's design standards, whether there were policies in the general plan, all the specific plans, everything design-related, and laid those out and then laid out an approach afterwards to make sure that we're consistent with those. So you haven't seen the, you know, the larger outline of ODS that we've created because we took that different step of creating a sample package. But I would like the PC to understand and be comforted by the fact that that was the very initial exercise of this ODS was going through the city's entire history of design preferences and making sure that the outline reflects, does its best to reflect those. So I would like you to know that we've done that. And that memo was submitted to staff and of course.
Can you comment on whether this would apply to additions to existing multifamily residential and mixed-use residential?
Well, is.
And what would be the extent of that addition that would trigger the use of this ODS?
I don't know if we have an answer on what the extent would be on that, but if you're doing new construction, a multifamily, you would be subject to the standards that are in place at that time. So if these were adopted and you were adding significantly to a multifamily project, then yes, it would apply to you. I mean, pretty much even now duplexes are considered multifamily housing under state law. So it's largely anything not a single-family home could be subject to multifamily standards at this point.
So is that a given or is that a matter of how we would go with this, with this ODS? In other words, are there differences you found as you looked at the different cities on how they approached the matter of addition of units or addition of square footage to existing?
I can't answer your specific question, but I think if the Commission wanted to treat existing development differently from somebody who's doing a full redevelopment of a site, you could clarify that in the standards, that for instance, if a project had a certain design that reflected a time period, you could say they're exempt from these standards as written. You're looking more at keeping the character. Probably a good example in this city for single-family would be you have one Eichler subdivision. And a lot of our comments about single-family design do not apply to Eichlers at all, because the character of them at the time they were built, it just does not make sense. They, they're built in a different manner. So in order to not undermine that, you either exempt them or you have standards specifically targeting that. So I think you could do the same thing for additions. You know, that would be a thought we could have going forward. Again, the nice thing with this is you're not obligated by state law. You don't even have to have objective design standards. So I think it gives you latitude to how you'd want it phrased.
Yeah, I think we talked about this in the context of single-family Muni code changes in earlier agenda item. And in general, we'd like to provide some flexibility to applicants with existing multifamily that may have been built in, you know, the 1980s and they cannot meet today's ODS that were defined for new multifamily. So let's, let's look at how we can accommodate that and not apply something that's overly rigid on a property that really wouldn't be compatible with the ODS defined for new properties.
Yeah, it certainly doesn't need to be a part of this, the additions. I think in San Mateo and in other documents that include additions, they're really focused on the external massing and facade issues. So, you know, an existing apartment building just doesn't slap on an ugly 4,000-square-foot addition of four units without adhering to the new guidelines or excuse me, standards for attractive patio materials and corner massing and things like that. So it's really about making sure that the external components of an addition.
And I'll make one final comment before I look for other comments from other Commissioners. The point-based scoring, I only saw that with Sunnyvale. Did you find that in any other cities that, that you were looking at, the point-based scoring that they have at Sunnyvale?
I didn't see it in other cities. That actually was a request of Sunnyvale when we did this, instead of just selecting from lists. And again, this was early in ODS where we're, the city was looking for some actually creative ways of doing this. That wasn't just you have to do this, you have to do this. So that, an example of that was the entryways where the standard we created was you need to achieve up to 60 points out of this, out of this group of components. And some were at different levels of points. You could get 10 points for a patio with materials that reflected the roof. You could get 20 points for, you know, whatever it was. And you had, you had to do enough stuff to add up to 60 points. And if it was a big addition, something that was very significant, it was worth 40 and you could just do a small one with 20 or six small things for 10 points each. And the city of Sunnyvale liked that idea of giving designers flexibility. In their mind, it allowed them some flexibility.
And since you mentioned you worked on the ODS for Sunnyvale, did you have a chance to get community feedback on that? And would you be able to recap what kind of feedback you got, either from the community or from developers, on point-based scoring?
No, we didn't get feedback. That came in after the draft. I mean, it went through the, obviously, the Planning Commission and the Council and those were public meetings. And we didn't get any specific comment on that approach.
Okay. All right, very good. Let me yield to my fellow Commissioners if anyone would like to make any comments. Commissioner Scharf, no comments. Commissioner Lindstrum?
Yeah, I have a couple. Okay, so since we talked about that 95% of five-plus unit developments are basically gonna exempt themselves out of this process, I'd just like to make sure that we are making this as streamlined and friendly and focused on the two to four, the duplexes and the smaller units. I mean, it would be great if they can use objective standards to streamline and have a ministerial approval and, you know, so we can encourage that those kinds of developments, more of those kinds of developments, because I know we don't have a whole lot of those. So having maybe a separate section that's focused on that and maybe a different approach that says, hey, if you, you know, I don't know if the point scoring system works or not, but if there's a way to make it easier for them, saying if you get to 60 points, you know, you get an extra speedy ministerial approval of some kind, just to kind of incentivize those kinds of developments, I think that would be really helpful. I, of all the five, I did get a chance to look at all five. I think Sunnyvale was probably the one I liked the best, so congratulations. Good job on that one. I like the use of tables for laying out the, the objective design standards. I think it made it a lot easier to understand versus Palo Alto is just like, it's all text. It's, it's so dense. It's, it's really not very friendly. So I thought Sunnyvale, you guys did a really nice job with the tables and the 3D drawings are nicer than the ones in like Palo Alto and in other like Los Gatos. The Sunnyvale ones are more 3D and they're just easier to understand. They show the whole building, not just like, you know, two walls. So, so I think there's been a little bit more thought put into the 3D drawings and the drawings in general. So I like that. And I thought Sunnyvale was more detailed also in terms of roof forms and open spaces and windows and glass and, you know, bird safe design and landscape design. So I thought there was, Los Gatos I know went into pedestrian and bike a little more in detail. So I think that might be a good thing to, to bring in as well. But, but I like how much detail Sunnyvale went into. I thought the point-based scoring was easy to follow, but it would be good to know if we can hear from Sunnyvale, if anybody's used it, if anybody's found it useful, like get, get a postmortem from them on, you know, has it gotten any use at all? Because it seems intuitive on the face of it, but you know, maybe it's not. So it would be good to get some feedback on that. I really like San Mateo's real photos with the drawing overlays on top.
I do too.
But it looks really cool, but then as I started thinking about it, I was like, it must be such a pain to find photos to like, actually, like, it just creates so much more work. So I was gonna say I really liked them, but I, I was like, no, it's not worth the extra amount of time that would take to find those specific photos. I would like to get your thoughts on the contextual design criteria that Palo Alto uses. I really like that better than the intent statements that you used in Sunnyvale, because they're more in-depth, they're longer, they have multiple bullets, they, they're more fleshed out, a lot more detailed. And, and that felt much richer in terms of explaining what the city has in mind for, for each of those design standards from a more subjective perspective. So just wanted to get your thoughts on pros and cons of that versus the, the intent statements that used in Sunnyvale.
No, I agree. I mean, this really goes back again to, to the timing. And, you know, when we did these, that was sort of our way of laying out, like you said, just a general vision of what these things, of what these objectives are meant to, to create the character. Whereas Palo Alto had created these now with the intent that these would be used as de facto design guidelines for any project that did go discretionary. The difference is that, or one of the differences is that Sunnyvale already has in place, I think, eight different design guidelines for every different topic. So it could, it already has a foundation of guidelines to be used if a project does want to go discretionary. And so the assumption in, in Sunnyvale was, well, if you do want to, you know, choose a discretionary route, which of course, there goes your streamlining, because look, here's 700 pages of design guidelines that we're gonna review against. That's also why it has bird safe guidelines, because that happened to be a big priority in Sunnyvale. And Sunnyvale already had an entirely separate package of bird safe design. So again, but Palo Alto, I think in its perfectly acceptable approach of just wanting to keep things efficient and in one place, created those standards as a way of, of, like I said, de facto guidelines.
So would there be any problems with us having something similar?
No, there wouldn't be a problem. I mean, it would create, if we're gonna do the standalone document, you know, you're talking about a longer document with probably, you know, a more complex format and layout. And Cupertino also has, you know, and if you haven't, I encourage you to go look at that, the memo I created very long to remind yourselves of all the different areas where design is already adopted, you know, in policy. But I do see your point about, I mean, I really believe, I agree with you that those objective, those early statements, if they're drawn out more, certainly characterize what the city wants and, but I do think it should be associated with sort of a policy agreement that these are, are now official design guidelines and every, you know.
Yeah, that makes sense.
The existing documents don't.
Right. So you don't have to have multiple documents.
Right, this is our.
I, I would like to go in that direction if possible, especially if we are making a standalone document, which I think we are looking at doing. So it, I think it would A, make it easier, right? So they don't have to refer to multiple documents if they do design, if they do use this, these objective design standards. And also it gives us an opportunity to have everything in one document, but also just, you know, provide more color and more richness to, instead of just numbers, right? In one document. What was I gonna say? There was one more thing. Okay, I'll hold off. I can't remember the last thing I was gonna say.
Thank you, Commissioner Lindstrum. Vice Chair, Kassol Sharon.
Yeah, thank you. So I guess I'll give some of my comments. First of all, I, you know, thank you for your work. I, I think that having reviewed some of the other cities' objective design standards more closely, I do think that our level of prescriptiveness is good right now and it's not overstepping. I've seen some very, very granular stipulations in some of other cities' ODS that I think are gonna get skipped over. So I think, you know, we're, we're good on that front. I also don't think that we should be completely giving up on the objective design standards, you know, being taken. For City of Palo Alto, I was able to find at least three projects that went through their Architectural Review Board and went through the whole matrix of objective design standards. And most of them actually, the one, the three that I was able to find within the past year, I didn't go further than one year back, but the three that I was able to find, they actually did generally adhere to most of the standards that were set forth. They were, even including like for setback, for, for step backs, for example, they weren't able to take every single stipulation for the step back, but they did try. So I think that, you know, we should lay forth what we think the community will want. And I think developers will at a minimum consider it and try their best to work it in. So I do think that, you know, we have seen other cities see some success with this. For Sunnyvale, I was not able to locate where they are keeping or listing their objective design standard review. So I agree with Commissioner Lindstrum. It would be helpful to, if you could, I don't know, speak with their staff and see how that's worked out. Because for Palo Alto, the process is a lot more clear. They're going straight through the Architectural Review Board, so I was able to find them. I, I did have some minor feedback as, you know, we have progressed. The, on the trees in the, in the sample ODS that you provided, trees spaced every 30 feet. I am wondering if that, if there's a way to reconcile that with the fire code, because I've spoken now with one developer and I also saw within City of Sunnyvale, another developer waving this because the fire engines cannot get to the residential buildings through the trees. And so this is something in Cupertino even, that a developer I've spoken with has said they, they cannot do the trees spaced at 30 feet. So, you know, we love our trees and I'd love to figure out how to get that worked in, but I'm, I'm not sure how to do that in a compliant manner. So, you know, I don't, I just wouldn't want to set forth a policy that we just can't uphold. So if we can figure out how to make that compliant, that would be great. And I was curious, from a process standpoint, are we going to have staff, similar to Palo Alto, basically populate, for any project that goes through this design review, would they be populating sort of like a checklist and then making it public to the Planning Commission so that we can see? Because we don't have an Architectural Commission. So, you know, what would our process be for any project that goes through this?
I think we could define that. We have, say, a similar process for direct or minor modifications where it's a staff-level decision, but the decision is sent at the point it's made to all the Commissioners and all the Council members. So you could ask questions about why, why was this done? What's the determination? Is it appealable? We could certainly come up with something like that, because the, the intent for somebody using the odds is that they get that streamlined approval. Otherwise, there's really not a clear incentive for them to use it, short of there being four units or fewer.
Yes, I think if there is a sort of matrix or checklist that can be presented back just for like transparency purposes, that would be really helpful. I'm sure most people will trust that, that staff made the correct decisions, but just to have that record, you know, for me, looking back through the City of Palo Alto's records was, was really helpful.
I think, I'm sorry, all of our objective design standards that we've created come with, we reduce everything into a checklist that has an option for both the developer to make the checks, I want to make sure I got all this, yes, 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 and then staff to make the checks. The idea is that the, the review process happens on both sides.
Great.
So you can assume that would be included in this package, probably as an appendix.
Great. I also wanted to just comment, because I know this was one of the questions around the formatting. I actually liked the Palo Alto formatting of having the design standards somewhat built into the Muni code. Just, it's nice to have everything in one centralized place. And if that's not the direction that we go in, then I guess second to that, I would say if we can have links within the document, because I think that was part of what made it so convenient to look at the Palo Alto design standards, was the sidebar and you can kind of click really quickly, you can navigate easily.
I think, yeah, there's also something, I don't want to say psychological, but when you see something in the zoning code that is taken as, as law, you know, in so many ways, there is, I think it does translate more into a review and adherence by a developer. But what we can do is adopt the package by reference into the zoning code. So that's both in the document and in the zoning code. And yes, with a live link, you know, and the, the package, even though it's separate, is still, can still be numbered as part of the municipal code. And all of that strengthens, strengthens the, you know, the fact that this is a foundational document that, you know, we expect you to hear by, unless of course, you legally opt out or waive from it. But I also, I do think that that's part of the success in Palo Alto is that it's, it's right into that code. And then they do have the very hands-on Architectural Review Board and PTC, so.
Okay, thank you, Vice Chair. So I want to go back to the two to four unit. Can you clarify what would be the implications if we exempted two to four unit from ODS versus included it? And, and I want to set some context for why I asked that question. We have, anytime there's a disruption in single-family neighborhood block, you have a lot of residents coming in here, giving us feedback, saying I didn't want to see, you know, the, the privacy intrusion and the, and the impact of privacy. There's a number of RENA units that we have already allocated that are in the corridors of the city that really meet the RENA units that are expected. So I'm trying to understand what are the pros and cons of either including in ODS or exempting from ODS for the small two to four unit?
Well, the main pro of including them is that state law calls out the types of projects where these, that cannot be denied or have their density reduced with. or have their density reduced without objective standards. And that includes any housing project with two or more units. So the fact is, although you don't have to include them, a developer can certainly then just skip, of even a three-unit process, has, is still entitled to that streamlining process. And if you don't include them, it means you have no design authority because you can't use existing design guidelines because they're not objective and they're not in the ODS. So unfortunately, it's state law defines the applicable projects and a four-unit project is within the, uh, the sphere of state law. So the, the, the main pro of including it is that at least you are maintaining some sort of design authority even over small projects, just like all the other projects. And I mean, that's really what it comes down to is, is state law sets this requirement.
And, and that would apply for an SP9 lot split? Okay. And do you believe that this needs to be a separate design standard, given, you know, the differences that you have between these, you know, higher-density multifamily versus a two-unit or a four-unit?
I think it needs to be a separate section in the document where, you know, duplexes, the focus is not on major step backs of the fourth and fifth floor. It's about ensuring that your entrance is compatible with the surrounding, um, it's residences. It's ensuring that, you know, your, your, um, your garage doors don't take up the entire front end of the, of the, uh, of the unit, et cetera. Other quadplex standards we've developed are the requirement that the four units should stand out as their own, but as a cohesive part of the single development, you know, so each door is, has its own entrance. And the windows, although they're symmetrical, they definitely, um, uh, hint at four different units, things like that. So yes, you, as I said, you can't adopt blanket ODS for a huge mixed-use project and a quad, a quadplex.
And like the exemptions we talked about, would we exempt existing two-to-four unit projects if they came in for a remodel permit, for example? And how do we, how do we think about ODS and whether it would apply when a two-unit came in for a remodel permit?
Again, I, I think we could distinguish remodels from new construction, if you wanted to go there, because they, they clearly are different. You know, I, I think new construction kind of speaks for itself. It would be subject to the standards. I think if we do not call out that we are exempting remodels, then the, this as a, you know, a new standard would apply to them. So I think that's just something we would want to be mindful, like, I think what Greg is saying in the discussion on missing middle is you're largely looking at how it, it's typically closer in proximity to single-family neighborhoods. When you see duplexes, the intent behind them was to have them fit with a single-family neighborhood if they're well-done. A lot of the time, people don't even know they're looking at a duplex. So I think the standards for that would be how do you keep them compatible with your single-family standards? Whereas if we're looking at a townhome, it's more transition between townhome and single-family and certainly larger buildings are a separate issue entirely.
Yeah, I'd like to make sure that we consider exempting remodels so that we don't subject the two-unit remodels to ODS and then put our existing rentals and SFH owners through a whole bunch of new changes.
I agree. I mean, I mean, ODS and this entire thing is about streamlining new housing. A remodel is not, you know, I don't think that should be a part of this at all.
And, and I think the primary consideration as you go through this effort is to make sure that, keep in mind the feedback that our residents have given you through the various hearings that you've heard, you know, neighborhood privacy has been top of mind for residents. Transition between these different types of constructions has been a factor, so landscaping setbacks, things like that. I think we've given you that feedback before. And, and in general, I think trying to keep the language such that it gives our planners some amount of discretion, using language such as at least no more than, and, you know, finding the right terminology so that you're not boxing them into a specific, um, quantified number. Okay, any other feedback, Commissioner Scharf? Do you have anything? Okay, so we don't have any vote for today and I, I'd like to see this move forward to a draft so that we have a draft that we can actually review. So keeping that in mind, I don't know that we are gonna come back with the next meeting and give you any more feedback than we already have.
That's fine.
If we might see a draft sooner, I think that'd be good. And if we have community hearings, I think that's a different audience. It brings in more people than this meeting. So just something to keep in mind if we can.
No, thank, thank you. That's actually as clear as we could have hoped for, to come back with a draft then. So we know what the next step is.
Okay. If there's no other feedback, uh, I guess we can close this item. Is there anything else staff was looking for? Did we give you what you hope to get out of this?
I feel good. Thank you very much for having me.
Okay, so with that, we will close agenda item two. We have no public hearings today. We have no old business or new business. We will move on to staff reports and then commission reports.
Uh, staff does not have anything other than to say we will have a development project at the next meeting. So we are anticipating having, uh, one public hearing and a reminder, which I need to get an email out as well, is that we have the Planning Commissioner Academy coming up in March. Their registration opens in about a month. So I can send an email out to confirm again. I, I believe we have the budget to send all the commissioners if they're interested. It's in Anaheim. So we'll get that out to you. But that's all the news I had for tonight.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Any commission reports?
Yeah, I attended the Housing Commission meeting last week. There were two things. They were talking about the funding availability for affordable housing, which, you know, in Cupertino, since we don't do Lufy's, we have inclusionary requirements. There's not a lot of, um, money for this, um, BMR housing. So, um, I can't remember the exact amount, but it was not, not really enough to build anything. Um, and then they talked about the management of our BMR housing, which is Rise Housing, not associated with Valco Rise, previously Hello Housing. And that's up, I guess, every, how many years it comes back up for like reapproval or reselection of, um, who's gonna manage our BMR program and who's gonna administer it. There were some other suggestions about the city, um, funding additional affordable housing, but that, that would really be a city council, uh, city council action if they decided to do that. Um, yeah, and that, that was it.
Hey, thank you, Commissioner Scharf. Appreciate your, uh, spending your evening with the housing commissioners. I'm sure they enjoyed your company. Other commission reports? Okay, no other commission reports. With that, I think we will move on to future agenda setting. Any future agenda items from commissioners? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the next item, which is adjournment. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you.